Yeah, alright. Alright, let's keep going here. Okay, welcome, welcome. We call a meeting in the order for the Capital Facilities Corporation. Roll call, we have only one. Only six people here. Mr. Nava is absent. Okay, so first order of business is to elect our board of directors for the Capital Facilities Corporation. Generally speaking, would have Mr. Nava take charge, but he is gone, so as Vice President of Capital Facilities Corporation from last year, I'll take over. So.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate you, Mr. Connectson, as President for the Board of Directors.
Thank you. Have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Secretaries, are you getting this sort of right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And for Vice President?
Before you go on to Vice President, I, yeah, it's a verbal vote.
Okay, okay. Mrs. Alexander?
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes, six, two, zero. For Vice President then, we have a nomination for Vice President.
Motion to nominate for Dr. Ball for Vice President?
Second.
Okay. First, we have a first and second, we'll take a voice vote again, starting with Mrs. Alexander.
Aye.
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 Right. And for.
Just for the record, I'm gonna put that was six, zero with one absence.
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for Sherry Alexander for Secretary for Board of Directors.
The Secretary, okay, you might want to order.
No, we never did my.
I'm looking at this. Okay, we have, we have a first and second for.
It's different.
Uh, Ms. Alexander as Secretary for the Board of Directors. Okay, so we have, uh, look.
Aye.
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 Okay, and that motion passes, six, zero, and one absence. And, I'll try to write that down.
I just did.
Yeah. And for Chief Financial Officer, I would like to nominate Mr. Khan.
No, second.
I second. Okay, so we have a first and a second for Mr. Khan as our Chief Financial Officer, take a voice vote. Starting with Mrs. Alexander.
Aye.
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 And that motion passes, six, zero, and one absence. Okay. Any other items we have is. Minutes from our January seventeenth meeting. Mr. Young, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, no. It's based on the minutes.
Okay. Then I'll take out that, and then I need a motion to adjourn.
You need a motion in a second and approval for the minutes.
Oh, okay.
Motion to adjourn?
No, this, no, I'm sorry, we're gonna have.
We have to approve the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion to approve the minutes.
There we go. Have a second.
Second.
Okay. Let's have a voice vote then.
This one can go all chronic if you're logging, otherwise you can go voice.
I just go voice.
Let's go voice on this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're rocking and rolling. Okay, Ms. Alexander, voice vote.
Aye.
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 Okay. That is proved, minutes are proved by vote of six to zero and one absence. And the next thing I need is adjourned this meeting.
Now, can I do it?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
There you go.
I'll second it.
Alright, first and second. Let's have a voice vote.
Aye.
You don't have to vote. You don't have to.
Hey, well, this is official. We are adjourned to closed session then.
Uh, you then need to, so adjourn this meeting. And now, that ends that meeting, now we enter the closed session phase, we need to make sure that no one from the public doesn't first want to speak on closed session.
Call the order.
Yep, sorry, call the order first, please.
Okay, it is, yep, it's time. Okay, we call this meeting to order for, uh, for closed session. Is there any public comment on closed session items? Seeing none, I think we need to adjourn this meeting then.
And we'll be in personnel.
Personnel, there we go. Thank you. Alright, here we go. We have quite a bit going on in closed sessions, so I apologize for being a few minutes late, but we are ready to go now. Okay. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Uh, Lucas, Dr. Alitas, please.
Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Do you want to introduce our student representatives? I have Jessica DePrado from Bear Creek Facility, alright? And I have something for you at the end of the meeting, by the way. Yes. You, you will like it. Okay, and Lucas from Lodi High School. And we have a representative from Middle College, would you like to introduce yourself?
Um, it's a pleasure to be here, my name is Hajra Shaheen Ahmed, and I am Middle College's ASB President, and I am a senior this year.
Okay, thank you. And during closed session, we had. Would I need to report on the capital?
Uh, no, you do not, on the, on the claims.
So I got that for my, so. For. We had a litigation claim number six, three, one, one, two, one, point, zero, one. Mrs. McFarland motion, Dr. Ball seconded, and the board approved the claim, six, ayes, zero, noes, and one absence. For the second claim, Mrs. McFarland motion, Dr. Ball claim, Dr. Ball seconded, the board approved claim six, three, one, one, two, one, point, zero, two, by the following vote of six ayes, zero noes, one absence. For the claim, for the next claim, Mrs. McFarland motion, Mr. Stroh seconded, and the board approved claim six, three, two, one, one, six, by the following vote of six ayes, zero noes, one absence. The next one, Dr. Ball motion, Mrs. McFarland seconded, and the board rejected claim six, one, I'm sorry, six, three, one, eight, nine, five, by the vote of six ayes, zero noes, and one absence. And finally, Mrs. Alexander motion, Mr. Stroh seconded, and the board rejected claim six, three, two, four, six, seven, by a vote of six, six yes, zero noes, and one absence. Okay? I get them all? Alright. At this point, I'd like to hear from our student reps. Ms. DePrado, would you like to go?
Hey, good evening, President Connectson, members of the board, Superintendent Young. I'd like to start off by welcoming Hajra, it's nice to have another girl around here, so I'm very happy. Um, okay, so Bear Creek is excited to be back for the second semester, and our seniors are excitedly anticipating what this semester has in store. Student government is busy preparing for our annual international rally put on by our ASB Vice President, Niko Normina, taking place March first, where we have once again invited select community members to join us. I am so excited to announce that the theme this year is Continental Cruise. Viewers will be able to sail around the world and enjoy various cultures along the way, we hope to see many of you there. Student government collaborated with the Red Cross Club to put on a blood drive last semester, we had a four point, four point three increase in first time donors, and eight point eight increase in Power Red units, and a twenty percent increase in overall team donors. Sixty-three units were donated and one hundred and eighty-nine lives were potentially saved. Our College and Career Center has been holding several presentations from different colleges and organizations. Speakers featuring professors and B C alumni sharing their experiences. Meetings offer information on scholarships, programs, and opportunities for students after high school. Student Gov is holding a special spirit day on Valentine's Day, as well as a lunchtime activity. Linker will be holding a lunchtime showing of a Charlie Brown Valentine in the theater this Valentine's Day. As for special student slash staff accomplishments, winter sports are in full swing. Girl soccer is currently first in league, and boys basketball is third. Brian Gill and Ethan Talisyon placed in last weekend's wrestling invitational tournament. Speech and debate just completed in the M L K Invitational Tournament with students Latony Mandiola, Jason Von Brandt, and Alyssa Misa all making it to the semifinals. The following juniors were selected to attend the prestigious Leadership Camp R Y L A, Shania Batista, Alana Youth, Matthew Romano, Jeremiah Lime, and Andrew Viskino. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright. Okay, Lucas, you want to go?
Absolutely, it's a pleasure to be back for our second semester, I'm glad to be here. So, student government is really excited to be back for this new semester and working in the ground running, kicking in the gear, getting ready for a fun-filled third quarter. Uh, we have Winter Fest soon to be upon us from January twenty-ninth to February second. We will be holding our Spirit Week, which concludes with the Winter Fest basketball game on the second, where the Winter Fest King and Queen will be announced. The Spirit Days are as follows: Monday Hippie Day, Tuesday Dress as a Teacher Day, Wednesday Athletes versus Mathletes, Thursday is Anything but a Backpack, and Friday is Class Colors Day to Go with our Rally. Currently, teachers and staff are putting together a list of nominees for the Winter Fest court. As for activities and sports, before we left for break, Star Club hosted two friendship bracelet making activities in the library to help students calm their nerves for finals and make bracelets to share with their friends. Currently, winter sports are battling hard in league competition, hoping to earn top of league and/or a ticket to playoff competition. Tonight, girl soccer is playing West, to my knowledge, unless the rain has delayed that. Um, and then tomorrow night, we have boys basketball playing Saint Mary's and boys soccer playing West. Uh, spring sports are beginning conditioning to prepare for another successful year. And finally, the College and Career Center is hosting many workshops, such as the FAFSA workshop, to aid our seniors and their families in navigating the transition to college and beyond. Seniors are finishing up their applications, and we look forward to hearing about, look forward to hearing about all of these spectacular schools that Lodi students will be going to in the fall. And with that, have a dry evening, thank you.
Dry evening, huh? Okay. Thank you. Okay, first time report, who's opted in?
Um, so for Delta College's spring semester began on January twelfth, last Friday, so all of our students have been easing into their college classes. Nonetheless, our school clubs have already planned tremendously for the upcoming months. Mesa will be holding a Valentine's Grams fundraiser where students can purchase candy grams as well as one of their eight note designs, allowing students to deliver kind messages to one another. Alongside their fundraiser, they will be working on Mesa Day event scrimmages where student coaches will view the overall progress of participating teams on their chosen projects, and decide which teams are the most qualified to participate at U O P's annual Mesa Day. Later in February, Red Cross will be collabing with Mesa in hosting their bi-annual social event, where students help fundraise money for Mesa through purchasing pizza and snacks while enjoying their time socializing with other club members. In celebration of Valentine's Day, Pride Club will be selling one rose candy cupcakes for the week of February fifth, and at the end of the week, they will host a Valentine's Day themed event, Love Struck Festival. There will be pizza and chocolate-covered strawberries offered to students while having the opportunity to take part in fun activities such as karaoke and bingo. Currently, our art club has an ongoing winter art contest where students submit pieces of art to three different categories: traditional art, digital media, and photography. At the end of this contest, there will be a student gallery walk where students' talents will be displayed. Student government is currently in the works of planning a Dragon's Movie Night towards the end of January. Currently, we have our committees finalizing themes, food, and event backgrounds as the student body is coming up with movie suggestions. This week, we will begin committee presentations where our entire class will blow on ideas presented by their peers. By the end of January, our spring rally preparations will begin, where each class will submit their chosen royalty and game representatives. While students will also have the opportunity to sign up to take part in a talent show with auditions beginning mid-February. At the start of next month, classes will start designing class banners and chants showcasing their creativity. And students will also brainstorm ideas to enhance their class's spirit in hopes of winning the class trophy for Spring Rally of twenty-four. As Cancer Appreciation Week is upon us, we are planning on creating bulletin boards outside our cancer's rooms for students to pin short notes expressing their gratitude for our lovely cancers. Moving on to, um, past events, our school staff hosted prospective incoming freshman informational nights on January ninth and eleventh. They provided information to parents and students about our dual enrollment program in preparation for freshman applications to close on February second. Beginning next week, our seniors will begin their scholarship presentations, educating not only themselves, but also their peers on open scholarship opportunities. Our senior career exploration project is ongoing. This is where seniors conduct interviews with two individuals from different career paths in which they're interested in to further prepare themselves for life after high school. Moving on to recognitions, a shout-out to our senior seminar audit teachers, Mrs. Giannoni and Mr. Farlow, who have been providing close assistance to seniors by guiding them through the step-by-step through FAFSA's application, which is now open. Our teachers have also been answering questions every single classroom regarding C S U, U C, and private universities. We appreciate you. Last month, at U O P's quiz for a trivia-based competition, our Mesa's quiz bowl team placed first against multiple high schools and won each trophy. Dragon's Movie Night will be on January twenty-sixth, freshman applications are due on February second, Love Struck Festival is on February ninth, and then Cancer Appreciation Week will be on February fifth through the ninth.
Okay, thank you. Okay, fourth day comments? Moving on then to Mr. Young, your superintendent's report.
Yeah, Mr. Connectson, members of the board, as we answer the second half of the year, Happy New Year, and I wanted to bring your attention to some important information. Uh, the California Governor has presented the state budget proposal to the public, and several of us will be attending. Uh, staff will be attending the School Services State Budget Workshop tomorrow to help break down the Governor's budget. In February, we will bring a report back to the board outlining the projected budget, once we have a clear understanding. Should be noted that there will no doubt be changes in May, when we hit the May revise and have a clearer picture of the fiscal climate in California. And at that time, we will be able to see what the adopted budget looks like, but this is the first part of that process. But nonetheless, we did want to make you aware of some important dates, and Michael, if you could pull up the calendar. Uh, before you is a picture of the rest of the year as far as our timeline in the district as we prepare our budget for the future. Just wanted to show you that, because that's an important part of our job in preparing for next school year as well. And with that, I have nothing else at this time.
Alright. You coming, Ford? Okay, this time we'll move on to comments from employee groups, each employee group representative shall limit their comments to five minutes or even less. Uh, are there any? Invite, uh, LEA or, okay, LEA? Come on up.
Okay. Good evening, President Connectson, members of the board, Mr. Young. First of all, I want to ask, how do you dress like a teacher? I don't know, what are they, wear hockas? Baggy tooty, tunic for women, leggings?
I dress ugly.
Yeah. Hey, I'm, sorry. I don't think I dress that ugly, but anyway.
No, not at all.
So, yeah, that was like, what? Okay. Um, that was just a question I had. And then, uh, middle college welcome, and, um, being a former Mesa advisor for middle school, yeah, you guys always won. You and Snika, ooh, anyway, it was a big battle. So, um, bargaining, um, I know that one of the goals of the, of the board was to have, uh, bargaining done by the end of the, of the, uh, the year in December, and unfortunately, that hasn't happened. Uh, LEA is still trying to get some dates on the books. We were told that we would have two dates in January, and that is obviously not happening. I'm hoping we can get, uh, two dates in February, I think we have one, um, and, but we need to get more dates if you think that we're going to be, have our twenty-three, twenty-four calendar done by the end of the school year. Um, this is just, it's, uh, it's kind of frightening, and I was hoping that we could start doing what other places did, and that is bargaining our contract for the next year before we even started to work. Um, one of our themes here, the three Rs, um, respect, was it, respect, retain, and recruit? So I'm hearing from my colleagues that, um, they're getting recruited by other school districts, especially in hard-to-find, um, categories such as special ed, science, go-science, and math. You know, when we continually don't have our contracts done and we're in a state of limbo, I can see where someone, and we don't feel respected, I can see where our members would like to say, you know what, I'm gonna go someplace else where I can get those things. So it's a, it's a conundrum. I know that we are short teachers, I know that, um, special ed is a hu, is a huge gap. Um, I know that several, um, classes are filled with subs, I know several secondary teachers that are teaching one-twenty's, because we don't have enough teachers to fill all the sections we have. So hopefully, that is motivation for you to get our contract. Um, again, Happy New Year, that's about all that I have, and hopefully, we'll get more dates on the books, thank you.
Thank you. I, I can tell you that dressed like a teacher, you have, you have to wear Mickey Mouse tie. That's how you do it. Any other employee groups? Nope? Okay, moving on then. At this point, we'll go with comments from the public, a twenty-minute time period has been set aside for the public to address the board, and I was not listed on the agenda. Each public speaker shall limit his or her comments to three minutes, the board cannot engage in dialogue, uh, about public comments because of restrictions placed on it by the Brown Act. Okay, so I have, how about Casey Frederick?
Good evening, Superintendent Young, President Connectson, and members of the board. Um, my name is Casey Frederick, I'm a parent of a Lodi High School student, and also president of the Lodi FFA Boosters Organization. I am, uh, I would like to address concerns that we have over the proposed location of the theater in alternative B of the Long Range Facilities Plan for Lodi High School, which shows a performing arts complex being constructed behind our current ag classrooms. The concept design presented at the November thirteenth Steering Committee shows the theater being built in the location of our existing livestock farms, which were funded by a combination of ag incentive grants and community donations from our Lodi FFA Boosters Group. These facilities are crucial to our program and provide an opportunity for all our students to gain valuable hands-on experience in raising livestock for their FFA projects. Um, placing the theater behind the current agriculture facilities will also severely threaten continued growth of the agriculture program at Lodi High, because there will be no place for additional facilities, structures, and equipment to expand the program to support the growing demand for students entering the agriculture industry. If the agriculture program cannot plan for growth, there will be less opportunity for students to be trained in industry-standard facilities, which are constantly changing in agriculture. Our facilities cannot remain static, we must have the ability to grow and adapt to changes in the agriculture industry. I one hundred percent agree that Lodi High needs a new theater. Uh, my daughter's heavily involved in both the FFA and the theater programs at Lodi High, we're huge supporters of both programs. However, there are other open space locations that a performing arts complex can be built without tearing down existing community-funded facilities and limiting future growth of the agriculture and vocational programs. When the time comes, we're selecting the alternative to move forward with. In the Long Range Facilities Plan, I encourage you to choose alternative A, building the performing arts complex in a location away from the agriculture facilities, which would allow space for both of the programs to grow. Thank you.
Sandra Starr?
Good evening, Mr. Connectson, board members, Mr. Young, Dr. Solley, and Cabment. Thank you for your time this evening, my name is Sandy Starr, and I've been a teacher in Lodi Unified for nearly twenty years. As contract negotiations continue, I wanted to speak to what qualifies as personal necessity leave for teachers. Per the contract, we are not allowed to use leave for one, recreation, two, vacation slash recreation travel, three, engaging in other employment, or four, work stoppage or strike. There are some very specific allowances for two of those personal necessity days considered as. considered as compelling personal importance, or CPI days. For example, a teacher may take 2 days, and only 2 days, to take employee's child to college move-in day as a freshman. Not any other grade, just freshman. Or the wedding of the employee's child. Not for the wedding of a grandchild, nor a sibling, nor a good friend, or even cousin who has been like a sister. Now, I understand that teachers have the amazing perk of summer and quarterly breaks where vacations can be planned, but often, family, friends, or community events of importance do not fall within these timeframes. Per our contract, we have very little flexibility outside of the calendar breaks. I wanted to share a quick story about a new teacher and her experience 18 years ago. This teacher, that I may know well, in just her second year of teaching, wanted to attend her cousin's wedding in Boston. This teacher was one of high integrity and perhaps a little bit of a goody-two-shoes, and wanting to do the right thing, asked her principal hypothetically what a teacher in this position might do. Her principal, understanding this was a valid reason to miss a day of instruction, even though it would technically be a breach in contract, hinted that perhaps she might be sick that Monday, or maybe even be so sick to miss 2 days. With much fear and apprehension as a non-tenured newbie, that young teacher took a chance and went to the wedding only brave enough to miss just one day. That wedding was a memorable event that brought families together from all over the nation and meant so much to both the bride and teacher that she could be there. Happy ending, but a yucky feeling hanging over that teacher who had to lie to be able to attend. Now, this story could have just as easily ended another way if their principal had followed the letter of the contract. The teacher may have been told no and then have to make a choice between defiance of an administrator, breach of contract penalties, or missing out on an important family event. Even if they chose to secretly attend, in this day and age of social media, they might and should be fearful that someone at the wedding might post a picture and unknowingly expose the teacher's illegitimate absence. Again, an overall degrading feeling as an employee. The strict regulation of what defines personal necessity and compelling personal importance is biased and unjust. This "don't ask, don't tell" culture surrounding absences in our district is rife with inequity, fear-building, and general unrest in the hearts of those that prefer to abide by the contract and live life with integrity. The contract, as it now stands, forces teachers to make a choice to miss important family, friend, and community milestones of importance to them, be deceitful, or be in reach of contract, potentially resulting in the loss of health benefits. This makes no sense, and it sets the stage for potential harassment, injustices, and inequity at the whims of those in charge. No teacher or administrator should be placed in this position. Personal necessity days should be just that. Days where teachers determine their needs for supporting family, friends, and to do what they truly feel they need to do with their time. Thank you for your consideration.
Did you have a response you wouldn't make?
Oh, no, I was just going to say that just because we have a 20-minute period, that would be on the 3 minutes, I was just making sure.
Yeah, I'm watching it. All right. Who's next? Kelly Enson.
Good evening, President Knackstead, members of the board, and our superintendent. It's really interesting, Sandy kind of had a lead into what I was going to talk about. Last Thursday, I was at a political meeting for one of the branches of CTA, one of the different layers, and I was listening to the teachers from Lincoln talking about how thrilled they are because they've started doing interest-based bargaining. They've settled their contract, they're ecstatic. I think it was like 12%?
8%.
But over the whole time, they get like 15% off? They had a ton of money, and they were happy with their board. They are happy being teachers, and right before I had to get up and speak, I got a text from a student who was taking the MCATs this past weekend, thanking me for all that I've taught her and all the, it was a long time ago, because I'm a sixth-grade teacher. And I started thinking about my time with Lodi Unified. I'm like 34, 35 years into this. And a long time ago, we did interest-based bargaining, and that's what we did. We didn't have an attorney. We weren't always this [makes a sound] that we've been engaging in for the last couple of years, which I find extremely stressful and very unproductive. One of the things I was, I know a couple of weeks ago, I spoke about, you know, just say yes to some of the things we've asked for. And one of the things we asked for is what Sandy spoke about. It's such a simple thing, to extend that, to trust us, to use that properly. And if we were all sitting together and really trying to see what makes people happy, if that was truly our interest, we would be so much better off than where we are now. So I beg you to really look into that, to see what it would require. And I know that since we've had our attorney, things have just ratcheted up because she's there for billable hours. She's not there for the happiness of the teachers. She's not there for the happiness of the board. She's not there for the happiness of the parents. She's not there for anybody's happiness. She's there for money. And there are things that are not monetary that would be just as pleasing to us as some of the monetary requests that we ask. So I would really wish we could take a step back in time and go back to where we bargained kindly with a goal for the betterment of this district. Thank you.
Moving on to Consent Agenda A, the public. And student representatives may address the board on Consent Agenda A, which is routine business. Is there anybody who would like to comment on Consent Agenda A from the public? Okay. Is there, at board, do you have any items that you would like to pull on Consent Agenda A? Yes, Bill?
No, that's okay. I was thinking of.
All right, go ahead.
Actually, I'm sorry. I had a couple of questions about A15, just for clarification. So can you fill that out so I can ask questions?
That it? Okay.
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda by the same.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay, we have first and second. Do we have electronic voting here? There you go. Okay. Student vote, vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, and board vote. It's not coming up on my screen.
It's not coming up behind.
I did. Oh, okay. That's why I have you sit down. Okay. Okay, it passes 6, 6-0, and what absent? Absent. Okay. We didn't poll, right? Oh, yeah. Okay. What is concerned?
I just had a couple of questions, or question, I'm sorry, I should have reached out prior to. With the Elkhorn Proposal, there is a change in the final amount of what's been budgeted, and it said that the district will need to define the project scopes for items being removed. When we are talking about that, Mr. Khan, how do we define that? Is that facilities that sit in those, or how are those determined?
There's a lovely term in construction called value engineering, which means you go and reduce the project to the amount that's budgeted. As we work, in fact, your proposal, your proposers are presenting your long-range plan tonight as well. But as we work with LPA on this going forward, should the board approve this proposal? Currently, as it stands, the board's at surplus in its construction program and measuring your bond program. I don't envision reducing the scope of this, but if it were to happen, it would be a process where the board and their designated, their staffs would be advised by architects and engineers as to potential cost reductions in some of the items proposed.
Would the site have say-so?
Absolutely.
Also, I would like to make sure that the site has say-so.
I wouldn't imagine, I mean, the board has a very well-documented history of extensively including staff in all decisions up to the point where the design, final design goes to the Division of State Architecture. I don't see why that would be vacated at all. I think it would continue.
Okay. Can I make a motion that we approve? And those are the decisions.
Okay. Do we have a second?
That's it.
Okay, we have a first and second then. Board vote, oh, student vote, I'm sorry.
Aye.
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 Okay, board vote then. Motion is approved, 7, I mean 6 in favor, 1 absent. Moving on, what's next? Going on to Consent Agenda B. Public and student representatives may address the board on Consent Agenda B, student discipline cases, and each speaker needs to limit their comments to 3 minutes. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak on Consent Agenda B? Any items that need to be pulled in Consent Agenda B? No. Okay, then I need a motion on Consent Agenda B.
No, approve Consent Agenda B.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Students, you do not vote on student matters, so board vote please. And motion is approved, 6 and 1 absent. Okay, moving on to other action items. Other action item number 1 is a ratification of the Memorandum of Understanding to the Lodi Education Association. Dr. Dosie?
Yeah, we're seeking approval of this from the Board of Education.
Okay, any comments?
Motion approved.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve and second, other action item number 1, student vote.
Aye.
Aye.
A board vote? Other action item number 1 passes, a vote of 6 in favor, and 1 absent. Other action item number 2.
Yeah, again, this resolution is before you for hiring of short-term classified employees. Seeking your approval.
Okay, any comments? Okay, student vote?
Aye.
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 Yeah, I'm sorry, forgot to approve, okay.
Mr. Knackstead, members of the board, prior to you taking a vote, just want to make sure the public has an opportunity should they want to comment.
I didn't see it.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Student vote?
Aye.
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 Okay, board vote. Motion is approved, 6, 0, and 1 absent. 6 in favor. Where are we now? Number 3. Okay, I see people up there ready to look at other, other action item number 3. Mr. Khan, give a comment.
Thank you, President Knackstead, members of the board, Superintendent Young. I'd like to welcome back to the boardroom the board's now principal architect for the Elkhorn Project, Julian Watt. Julian was also the board's principal architect for the Toke Projects. And also Mariano Lovetto, who's been running the board's Long Range Facilities Plan. So they provided a report. They're here to go over whatever small tweaks and edits they've done, and then we'll ask you to approve the Long Range Plan.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us tonight. A good evening to all of you. So we last met in November and ran through the bulk of the information. There's a part there that wasn't quite completed at that point in time, which was really around the project prioritization. And so Mariana's going to run you through the highlights of that to make some sense of that. And then she'll also go through the, the one?
Yes.
The practice, sorry, thank you very much. Hopefully, you didn't catch any of what I said, but the bulk of this is being seen before. Mariana will run through the project prioritization process, which was essentially entrained or followed shortly after our last meeting together in November, as well as a demonstration in what's called a Power BI dashboard. So it's an online tool that the members here and the board and the superintendent and the team can choose what projects are going to be prioritized with the money bundle and make a change at a time. So it's quite accessible. So as Mr. Khan said, and this is the plan is to adopt the plan that's here presented, is the Long Range Plan. So the board does run through the next few slides just to talk about how it's structured. So keep going on through, so it's in through here. It's broken into a series of key sections. Each section has a key introduction and a purpose, and we've gone through a little more.
We could go slide by slide. Yeah, so go back to the, or the first one.
It's over the funnest, it's good. So each section is broken down. It describes introduction, the purposes being, what it's trying to do, and also a lot of it's around participants who's been involved in that process to achieve that section. Next slide, please. This one here, item 2, is going to be capturing the goals of Lodi Unified School District. So it's really setting up the table for a program to follow. It's also going to have demographics and capacity numbers, and also several work categories which carry through at higher stages for the cost plan. So what defines those cost of work categories? Next slide, please. Item number 3 here really kicks in, the work that's going to help your future teams be successful. So this is around the EdSPECS. Essentially, the design goals and how those are aligned for the respective projects on each campus. And so you'll have different architecture teams, engineering teams involved, and this is making it accessible and easy to use and do as projects be successful. And within this is really the narrative and diagrams as how it's described. Next slide, please. So number 4 in here is really where Robert needs to write, the program costs. And so this is the capturing the priorities of the step骤s, and the highlights of that, and a bit more detail Mariana will go through in that. Next slide, please. Item number 5 is the things that are more visible. So it's the diagrams of each site, followed by a description of the costs of the work that's outlined on that site. There's new build, modernization, and the different ranges of the modernization work. So those are the little packages essentially that can be understood quite dearly. The same way, the same thing in 2016, Long Range Facilities Plan as well. Next slide, please. The extension beyond this for number 5 as well, which was brought up by an earlier speaker, is that there are 2 plans for Lodi High School, which cover the description of the theater and different options on those sites as to where to place those and columns of that. And you won't find those multiple options on the other sites. So that's something to stay mindful of. Next slide, for item number 6. So this is the appendices. So it captures all of the key information, that sort of background information. And this will also be used to reference for the future project implementation phase development, which is the next step after this adoption of this Long Range Plan. And obviously, it could be used, that content and data can be used to describe. and data can be used to describe and develop future feasibility studies for huge sites going forward. So that's a whistle stop tour of the key sections of this development plan. I'll hand over Mariana if she can walk you through the highlights of the prioritization process workflow.
May I get a little bit closer? Okay. We could go to the next slide, please. Next slide. So the needs were 2.8 billion, and you can see the breakdown there. Elementary schools are about 1.7 million, middle schools 323, high schools 594, and alternative schools 164 million. So we also included a $15 million allowance for furniture, fixtures and equipment district-wide. So next slide. So the 250 million is a potential bond scenario. Developer fees for Gatner, if that site is to be developed, would be 29 million, that exists. Measure U funds have been accounted for already, and the remaining Measure L funds are 50 million. So the total funding available could be 329 million, but we don't budget for that because we need to remove about a third for contingencies such as the escalation to midpoint of construction or off-site issues, just an overall contingency. So we want to make sure that the district isn't promising something they can't do, so we can only budget for 220 million to be able to deliver on that promise. So we call that Phase One. We had the exercise done where they added more to go up to 329 million, and so think of that as Phase Two. If we get through that first batch of 220 million and we've got that 329 total available, then the other third adds up to the 329 million. So I'll go into a little more detail on that in the next slide. So there was a pattern that we saw district-wide. We asked every campus at the end of the process, actually in the first visioning workshop, and then again to revisit that, if you could have three things on your campus, which are the types of projects that would have the most impact. So overall, it seemed like new construction and replacing portables was a top priority. The library and media center and student support services was another priority, and safety, security and campus control. So across the board, that was the pattern, with middle school having the addition of physical education environments, and high school wanting the electives, the spaces to support electives to be developed, including admin and support. Next slide. And so the facilities department made this list of portables so that it can be a tool to be used for analysis. So it shows the portables in order of, you know, how to prioritize replacing them based on age and physical condition. So the, just like it happened in the last batch of projects, the district can deviate from the site diagrams and do what it takes to replace portable. So this will be a very useful tool to have this analytical matrix of your inventory of portables and their condition. Next slide. So we started with the steering committee doing a workshop to prioritize the projects, and right from the very beginning of this process, our team helped see where it would make sense to do the early childhood education centers and the regional hubs for special ed programs of low incidence. And so they took a stab at choosing the projects. We had the Power BI tool you'll see, and we clicked on different projects, and we, that group, looking at it through that lens specifically, not specifically the lens of removing portables, although many do get removed by looking at it through this lens, they only spent 157 million, and our budget was about 220. So then on their own, independently, they each had a worksheet and they cast their vote and added more projects, going to the total of 330 million, breaking it up into Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One being two-thirds and Phase Two being one-third. So when they did that second pass on their own, they put on another layer, another lens, which was targeting campuses with a lot of need that had no modernizations using Measure U funds, so that they could meet the goal of achieving equity district-wide, and also thinking more about how, which projects would be replacing portables using that portables analysis table.
So President Knacks, members of the board, Superintendent Young, to me, this is one of the most important slides in that this is a recurring theme with certainly this board and the board, the two boards prior, is portable replacement. So there, obviously this is a guide to the other eight attachments that are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages. But I think as you go through them, if you want some late night reading, you'll see the extent to which staff was involved in all of this. And I think it'll deliver some confidence level that that will continue. I would like to speak quickly about the next slide as well, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So we had a community member come to the public comment to talk about this slide specifically. Again, I'll remind all that the immense amount of work that Julian and Mariana have done on this for the board and in the community has involved hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people, all to get concepts, guiding concepts. So we heard tonight from one community member, their preference for option one. The board is presented with two options here in its permanent document, at least for permanent for the next 10 years. But everything you see in these pages is born out of the community of interest for each of your sites. So while certainly there's going to be opinions about which one is the preferred option in this particular case, I would advise, this is not the time to debate. So this will be your guiding, your roadmap to future construction. At some point, the board may decide to take another bond to the electorate. If that occurs, you will know where money's coming from, and you will begin to isolate whatever that bond amount is into an implementation plan, much like you did in the 2018-08 resolution. Then you will seek out architects to begin designing the items in that implementation plan, that narrow focus that needs the amount of money that you might possibly arrange. That is the time for debate as to which option is best. And that debate will occur in the site meetings. Now, I know several of you, I remember vividly how many meetings Mr. Porter attended on the Aquatic Center. So there will be meeting after meeting with people like Julian and Mariana to figure out exactly what the site wants in conjunction with what the board can afford. So again, this is a wonderful book of contents, and for all those other documents, I would advise you go through this and just look for what you're interested in, and it will tell you where to go. But in the interest of time, I'm going to ask you to get to the pyrotechnics, the Power BI. So everything that LPA has produced to the board will be available, I shouldn't say everything, but the civilian points will be available a click away on the board's website in the near future.
So we can just kind of skip through these slides. These are just showing, you know, what the steering committee did. Phase One is green, Phase Two is yellow, and just go back one slide. And that's the summary of what they came up with. So you can see all the schools in total, what they put in the Phase One bucket and what they put in the Phase Two. So I'll go sit over there so that I can drive the computer to do a demo. Well, we can go through these four real quick and then I'll do that. So Power BI, I don't know if everyone is familiar with it, but it's a software that the district is already using. We provide a web link so anybody can use it, even in the public to play with it. But it's just a web link that takes you to this dashboard that we created. So in this first dashboard, you can see 100% of the needs. Nothing is selected. Are you on, can you go back? Oops. Okay, sorry. So nothing is selected there, and we're on page one, right? Sorry, let me catch up with my notes here. Yes. So just keep in mind, this is a tool to be used in the implementation phase. It lets you click and choose different things. So here for the 221,000, or did it just change on me? Okay, 220 is documenting what the steering committee landed on. But again, this is not a decision. The decisions get made in the implementation phase. So think of it as an example. And then if you go to the next slide, that should show 114, there's that other third of what they put in the Phase Two category. So then next slide. That one is showing Phase One and Phase Two together on the same dashboard. And this is all very simple to use. You don't need to know how to use it. You'll see when I get on the website, you just click page one, two, three, four, five, and it's showing you these kind of snapshots. But then it allows you to click and choose and play with it. So next slide. So this was, this is in the deliverable, and it's just a little tutorial of how to quickly use it. It's very user-friendly, and it just keeps track of the multiple scopes and costs in the total cost section. And you can, you can see that little arc on the bottom left that's above the table. That keeps track of how many portables are being removed depending on the projects that you choose. So you can look at those two things in tandem. So I'll do a little, just quick demo over there on how it works. Okay, so I know the numbers are impossible to read in this context, but you can zoom in if it was on your own laptop. But this page is just showing you all, should I speak into it? I'll speak as loud as I can. All of the needs, right? That 2.8 billion. And then I zoom back out. And here we have a compare table. So on the left, I have one, and on the right, I have another. So that lets me select things like, if I wanted to say, do it by scope, so this isn't by campus, this is by scope. So I'm clicking all the safety and security projects, and I'm being random, I'm not saying this is reflecting what the steering committee wanted. And let's say I tick many of these science, and I can deselect that, science projects. And I keep looking at this, and I think, okay, that's how I want to spend the 220 million. I can come over here to this table and I can do, and it's removing 20 portables by doing that. But I think some here, do something like choose all of the new construction. And I'm over, so I'm going to deselect some of the big ones. I'll deselect another one, see if that gets me there. So you just play around with it, and you can see, obviously, new construction replaces a lot of portable. So it gives you a dashboard that allows you to like side-by-side compare and play around with it.
So a picture's worth a thousand words. Obviously, money is always, capital's going to be limited. You can't sell a billion dollars' worth of bonds in this school district, and you've got 2.8 billion dollars' worth of needs. So I think LPA and their team and your staff have adequately gauged sort of the consensus of what they feel they need. At some point, there're going to be trade-offs. We'd love to add this, but it's too expensive. And I think that one example that Mariana gave is if we move in this direction, that means 20 portables stay where they are. And the visual will, I think, enable or at least facilitate the board's decision as to where they want their capital go. You know, aside from also being something that Chelsea's going to love spreading around on social media. I think we've run through just a bit. Are there any questions for the board's architects?
We have any questions? Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Mr. Porter, the microphone, please. Thank you.
First of all, I want to apologize for not being at the meeting this morning. I had some issues at home that I had to deal with and kind of conflict, but I think you probably were worth it. Now, when I look at the $2 billion, I'm kind of staggered by that. Just so I can get wrap my hands around it a little bit. And I read it, but I'm still trying to, it's better when I'm listening. This is a wish list, is that correct? Or do you see this as a need for this school district?
I would say both of them. So it's definitely a wish list, and depending on who was advocating most for that particular component of the list, yeah, it's definitely a need.
Okay, okay. And then my second, of course, is $2 billion timeline on this entire project? Anybody have a timeline?
100 years for 2.8 billion.
Well, it's beautiful work, but let's be realistic. Do we have a timeline?
What I would put forward is, you passed your last long-range plan in 2016.
Correct.
Sold your first bonds in 2017, and four years later, you add Lodi High, Tokai, Needham, an M&amp;O facility, 13 parking lots, 11 firearms. So once the implementation plan is decided upon, depending on market, it can go quickly, but it won't be 10 years. It'll be three to six years.
For the entire project?
For the 2.8 billion, then that's 100 years.
Okay.
But you won't be, the board won't be able to sell enough bonds to cover that.
No, I understand. I was just curious why that number, or were we trying to be realistic or not? When you talk about bonds, have you surveyed the community, or you just talked about them?
I think some of your fellow board members will discuss, your fellow facilities committee members will discuss that later, but short answer is no, not yet.
And then my last question is, your priority, what we prioritize? How is that determined? Just so I know, I missed out on a meeting, so I'm going to be double talking there.
So we facilitated a process once we had all the cost estimates done, and we shared with the community. We had posters that showed the diagrams and showed what that campus said was their top three things, knowing that they had way more needs that would fit in the budget, what would be the top three projects to have the most impact for all owners. That was one way. We also, we met with the steering committee every week, so they were the most immersed, so we had a workshop with just them. And they said, let's tackle this by first just seeing what happens if we choose the projects that are prioritizing the early childhood centers and the special ed hubs. Then they went back, because they were under the 220 budget, and they added in projects looking through the lens of which campuses didn't get as much as others did for the last Measure U bond. So that's how we arrived at this stab at how to prioritize. So that's how we arrived at this stab at how to prioritize. And in that Power BI, we just put in, you know, save a snapshot of where they parked phase one and where they parked phase two. But then another layer is, you know, removing portables, and that's why we have that matrix. So what happened the last time LPA did a long-range plan is that was made a priority, like how do we remove portables and not use interim housing? Because that can be seen as a waste of money to have temporary housing. And so the board didn't follow exactly what was in all the diagrams. They looked at it through that lens. So that's what I was saying about the Power BI. It's a tool that you can use in the implementation phase to make the decision.
Now, my last question is, is it just bond-dependent, new bond-dependent?
Yes.
How much?
All of it.
So you, I believe, the board knows that we are adding scope to Lodi Middle and Davis and a few other sites on your Measure U. At some point, the Measure U will be complete and it'll be spent out. So this is going to require a whole nother layer of capital.
And the Measure U will end with a copy tax on all Lodi citizens?
It'll end the day the final bond is paid off, not the day that we spend the final dollar.
I guess. All right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate all your hard work. It's quite encompassing, a lot of information. And of course, I wish to wave a wand and say, let's get it done. But you know, being realistic, that's a lot to handle there. But I guess, and the other thing is, we have to look at this long range for maybe 30 years from now. And we have to leave it in the next board, in the next administration, in the next teachers and students with some type of site or plan to go along with it. So thank you for your time. And I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comments?
I just have a couple. Thank you for the report. It was very encompassing and interesting. Couple of just observations. When I look at what we want to do versus what we can do against what we have done, I just want to make sure I have our goals, that we aren't getting left behind. We've done a lot of things at schools and now our schools that are yet and waiting for more to be done or anything to be done. So while we're doubling down on some schools with additional buildings and additional wants or needs, and sometimes I understand there are some portables going to other schools. I want to make sure that we're being very fair about if we're doing so many in the proper Lodi that we're coming out to the country or going into the Stockton schools. Doesn't feel that way to me. Now, maybe I'm looking at through a jaded lens. But I want to make sure that we're not putting up a number of schools and some we're going to get to. There's a little bit of, we're going to get to you. They've been waiting six, seven, eight years. And so I want to make sure that when we get to those, we're getting to those ones that we did last. And maybe there's a little more to do, that we start with those ones. I know you're going to make that very fair impression. I'm going to watch that, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Any public comments? Come on up.
Hi.
I don't know if you remember me from the conversation in the hall. While we're talking all this money, one of the requests that we had that we were in a transition here, I guess, when you were coming, we had, we didn't have our regular principal and things were not communicated to staff very much. What we had wanted was a shade structure for our PE teacher. Not a huge, big thing, but just a working shade structure. So in the hot summer, he wasn't dying and the kids weren't dying all the time. And instead, we ended up with a shade structure in an area where we don't want a shade structure. That's huge. It's going to encompass this area. We're kind of like, why? And there's no reason for it. And so maybe that would be one thing we could kind of move over. Such as this essential money, and there's going to be time. So that was not the answer I got when we talked. But I'm an optimist, so let's make it work something else.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Please, I forgot to introduce, please introduce yourself for a minute.
My name is Amanda Lynn, and I'm a teacher within the district, but I'm wearing my parent hat right now. I do teach at Lodi High and have four kids come through Lodi High. But I, when I'm watching this presentation, I couldn't help but wonder what stakeholder means? Is it a random selection? Was there particular criteria where people got an invitation to be representing the community? That was one question. Could be rhetorical. I would like to know the answer someday. But I think I wanted to expand on the comments brought forth by Casey regarding the ag program. I just also wondered if there was any conversation about repurposing of space for the theater. I'm definitely a fan of the arts. I support the arts, would like to consider myself with them in solidarity for growth. And I do, I do feel a little bit like, it's a little bit of a if we build it, they will come sort of concept where we have a proven program with the ag that requires inherently real estate. So I would hate to see a compromised program that was already thriving and had the perspective, you know, for growth, be compromised for a concept that may or may not get traction that doesn't require that type of real estate. Could we refurbish? Could we expand on, you know, existing facilities? I work there. I see there are some spaces that are not being used to their full potential, and there's seemingly room for expansion with a number of those. And I just didn't know if that was ever a conversation or something that was, you know, addressed as an option with your stakeholders? So perhaps this is rhetorical, since I'm here, this is not the day for debate. But please reflect on that, because that would be important to me as a community member.
Okay, thank you. Any more comments? Come on up. Make sure you introduce yourself, please, again.
Hi, Sandy Starr. Commenting as a mother and a teacher on this one. But I noticed for the Lodi High plans that there was two options that do impact the tennis courts also. I'm new to the tennis world, but my daughter did do tennis this year, and I know the boys team took league. And what I've learned is that it's very helpful to have a minimum of six courts because it really determines the number of players you can have on the teams and how quickly you can get through that. And Lodi High did have a JV and varsity team, and it was invaluable to building a program and providing access for kids. So please can keep that as a consideration to whatever those plans are, to try and allot for at least six courts for the tennis. And then just as an overall district comment, as we're looking at these, to note that there are eight types of intelligences for our students and as humans. There's a logical, mathematical, linguistic, spatial, musical, body kinesthetic, intrapersonal, interpersonal, and the naturalistic intelligence. So I'm here to speak for the trees a little bit. Please keep that in mind, that as we're designing these schools, it really provides a positive space for students when they have welcoming landscapes, green space. I'm reading Last Child in the Woods right now, and it's just reminding me how important it is for our students to be able to connect with green space. So please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Any student comments? Okay. So we need a motion. All right, we have a motion to approve or disapprove.
I make a motion to approve Power BI three.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, student vote.
Aye.
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 And board vote, please. Okay, motion is approved, six, zero, and one absent. Moving on. Okay, moving on to other action item number four, approval of the primary logo for the Toki High School. Mr. Young?
Yes.
Before you, this evening, is your approval of the logo. Oh, yeah. Do you want to give us a quick reason why we're changing?
I said quit. I said. Quickly, the biggest challenge that I've come to understand is when you have an outdated, I guess, digital stamp or is it called a vector? Vector. It's hard to use that as you expand it and shrink it because of pixels and so forth. So this doesn't look different from what they've had in the past. I know Jeff Johnston is here as well. He is the athletic director to KI. But this looks very similar to what I've seen on my own son's athletic attire. And as such, they are just updating it and will be able to use it as a consistent digital. Vector. Vector, Victor, vector.
You sure you have, that's a real word? Okay, I'm just asking, okay.
So that's, that's one.
Okay. All right. Do we have any comments? Okay.
Just to clarify, Chelsea, we followed, you can, you can stay there. You can stay. I just want to clarify that we followed the process that we did with everybody else so that there are no questions coming down the pipe that we didn't follow the process?
Just for everyone's clarification.
Yes, just seeking clarification.
Sure thing.
For President, members of the board, Superintendent Young. Yes, we followed the same process for Toki High School as we've done for all other schools in our rebranding process for which we're in our third year of its implementation. For Toki High School, it was a little bit more of a special situation in that they were already using a logo that was not copyrighted. So there was no problem in recreating a vector image of a logo they had already been using that Jeff Johnston, members of Toki High School team had put across a lot of their different school fields and memorabilia and other things like that. So because they didn't already have a copyrighted logo, because we were able to recreate it using the vector sign form that we've been using for all of our other logos, it looks almost exactly the same as what they've been using thus far. But yes, the same process with the local, with the logo committee, with the logo surveys and all that, all those activities and the logo committee, because they had the ability to use a logo that was not already copyrighted, they decided to use the same logo they've had.
Okay.
Great.
Mr. Johnson's here. Would you like to comment?
We'll get to him in a minute.
All right, it's up to him if he wants to validate that or add it into it.
Is there any board comments first? Okay, okay. Any public comments?
Mr. Johnson, would you like to comment?
Where is he?
He is the.
Right, the like to.
Would I like to? No. Am I required to?
No, no.
I'll stand. Good evening, Mr. Knackstad, members of the board. Mr. Young, what can I answer for you?
I was just curious if you were happy with the logo? In the fact that this district spent, I don't know, millions of dollars putting in a football stadium for us, which we're really happy to have, and that logo is emblazoned at the 50-yard line. I'm thrilled. I'm thrilled too for it. All right. It is the logo that we have on our, all of our marquees. It is the logo that we have on our stadium turf, on our gym floor. $30,000 worth of new football uniforms that we just bought this year, et cetera, et cetera. So not having to redesign everything from the ground up is greatly appreciated. Just want to check in the trenches, that's all. It's muddy dimes. Back to Mr. Johnson.
My pleasure, as always. Any other comments from, any other public comments? Any student comments? All right. We need a motion there.
I'll shoot you a first.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Board vote. Oh, I'm sorry, student vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, now the board vote. Should be opposed. We're firing.
Lodi High.
I don't want it. Okay, okay. It looks like we passed, six, the zero, and one absent. Okay, moving on to reports. We have quite a few. We have any, now I need a motion to, if I want to. No, we can't do that. Okay. First, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you, President Knackstad, members of the board, Superintendent Young. So these are the first of businesses, many, many policy revisions and reviews as requested by superintendent. There are revisions to every single policy you see before you, but there are technical revisions to align with the gamut documents right now, with the exception of 3310, which adds a little bit of language that will prevent, say, a vendor from altering or redlining one of the board's forms of agreement without superintendent or superintendent designate permission to do so. That's, those are the only revisions in this whole series. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? No?
I would just like to say, after going through and reading all those, I appreciate and value the cleaning up and the uniformity of them. When you're looking and reading through these, it's like exhausting. But thank you for taking the time. I don't know, Dr. Sully, if that was your doing or your staff's doing, but it is appreciated. Mr. Conrad.
Actually, it's Jesse Turner, your director of purchasing.
I want to know it and value and appreciate them. Mr. Young, thank you.
And it takes some heat off of me, so thank you.
Any other comments, any board comments? Any comments from the public? Student comments? All right.
It's a report I got, so we will bring it back as an action item next time, if that's the direction of the board, unless otherwise.
All right, I think that's it. All right. Dr. Sully, American Rescue Plan?
Yes, sir. Thank you, President Knackstad, members of the board, Superintendent Young. Tonight, we have just a report or an update on our funding of ESRT III, which came with a requirement for an American Rescue Plan, financial plan. So actually, if you could go to the slides, please. Yeah, I think it's the second document. It's like this.
About the slide.
Yes, next slide. Thank you. So we are on track to expend our ESRT funds, the 71-plus million dollars, by the deadline of September 30, 2024. And under this plan, we brought to you, it seemed so long ago, July 13, 2021, in the midst of the pandemic, but it also seems like yesterday. And we had a three-year funding window. We are coming to that end, so we wanted to bring this to you as an update and also to point out some staffing concerns, or not concerns, but timelines that we need to deal with and also some proposed funding shifts. The funds were obviously meant to maximize the impact on students and provide relief in underfunding areas. We did that by the, using the allowable resources of improving air quality, and we replaced HVAC. We replaced carpet flooring for hardwood flooring, several other facilities-related expenditures, which we're able to be relieving a budget fund of some expenditures. And we also provided support for learning loss. We provided access to 120s for teachers or additional sections or additional teachers, intervention teachers and such, which, again, relieved other funding sources that we would have traditionally used. So this was a $72 million gift for providing support, and we sought to maximize that. And as you can see on what our, don't go to this yet, but on slides, the appendix slides, C and D, they give the actual, a little more bucket detail of what was spent where. This isn't meant to be an exhaustive audit of the funds, but just an explanation really pertaining to staffing. And as you can see in the bottom of this slide here, we allocated funds for 74 and a half positions. And knowing three years ago, this was, i.e., one-time funding with an end date, we had to plan ahead and we had to project for factoring in attrition over time. So at the end of the time, we would still be able to staff the positions that were, we felt were valid and necessary. And otherwise, if there were positions that became vacant, we, some of those we did not replace. So there are some noted attrition there. You can see that the 42 FTE, we have already identified some replacement funding by refunding with combination of categorical funds, learning recovery block grant funds, other funds that LCAP actions meet. So they're part of the LCAP. The coordinators, Kelly Collins, Jamie Kite Polinsky, and Jennifer Harris have done a pretty complete job, really noodling through what are our resources that are still available that will be ongoing? What positions are we looking to maintain? What positions are we looking to maintain? And how can we use that funding and be in compliance with the funding requirements and still continue to staff those positions? So kudos to those three ladies. In fact, I do want to make a note, Jennifer Harris is our new coordinator overseeing special funds, including ESRT, and also managing the collaborative effort of proposing and developing our LCAP. She was ill today, or she would have benefit of seeing her present this, but I'll do my best in her stead. So, so to the bullet you see there, the, the replacement funding has been identified for 42 positions. And the breakdown of where those positions land, you can see there's a reduction to attrition of roughly 12. And tonight, we're looking at, there's 20 positions that were still, we have identified funding, but those positions fall under our LCAP goals. And is that we don't bring the LCAP to you really until a March study session. We wanted to bring this to you early, ahead of that, so that you can be aware of this scenario, that we, we are identifying goals in LCAP to support the maintenance of these 20 positions. Now, on the appendix, and it's appendix, let's see, C, I believe it is, or is it? No, appendix A, so actually, if you could pull up the other.
The other?
Item, it looks like this. There, no, not that one. Oh, yeah, there you are, thank you. The highlighted yellow are the, contain the 20 positions, and I apologize for the size, obviously, on your computer, you can enlarge it. But those 20 positions are the ones we have identified LCAP goals that meet the need for those positions. And you will see classified staff, certificated staff in those. And we feel that this will be absorbed into the LCAP budget without stretching it beyond its capacity. And we won't lose those positions. Really, the effort in all this was to maintain our staffing. We still feel these positions are valid and supported and needed by the sites and the communities. They're largely student-facing positions. And under our LCAP processes over the past several years, and including a couple we've already conducted with the DLEC and the DACT already this year, there's calls for support for intervention supports for students, safety and security on campus, behavioral supports on campus. And these will fit into those parameters. So the yellow is really the, the concerns that we have, because if we don't proceed with this plan as proposed, we can get in a situation where some of these yellow highlighted positions would be subject to a March 15 timeline. And we need to know that in a couple of months, when our study session is. So we're kind of getting to a point which is a little bit almost cart before the horse, but not yet, because we still have two months before we even get to the study session. In March, we bring the collective input of community members, our educational partners, bargaining groups to you. And in March, we discuss the plans to address their requests, concerns, needs, and how that fits into the LCAP and our budget. Then in June, as we recall, we bring to you, along with the budget, the finalized plan, and it's presented once and then voted on by EDCO along with the budget. So if you could go to the next slide on the other document, please. I just want to, I put this on here just that there is other special funding available. As a backstop is, if, if the board was not amenable to our first swing at meeting these, retaining these positions through LCAP, some of the other funding might be able to tap into to support these, but not all. The arts and music instruction materials block grant really doesn't fit well, the learning recovery block grant would, would work more. And I did note there that last bullet is really to call out that there is always budget fallout in the LCAP, which is where we're finding the resources to apply these positions to. I'm gonna take a little bit of a bird walk here. The arts, music, and instruction materials block grant, which now be acronymed AMIM, is $15 million, it has a closing window of 2026. Those resources are intended for, as it says, they're instruction materials. But a lot of people have thought of this, they're confusing this with Prop 28, because it starts art, music. And when this funding was released, almost across the board, people talked about the arts and music block grant. And they forgot to mention the instruction materials. This really covers all the bases instructionally. And another bird walk, and my bird walk, Prop 28 is a significant amount of money, it's about $4 million plus for artists or annually. Because it's a proposition, it's ongoing funding, our current challenge is, 80% of it is earmarked for staffing, which would be wonderful if there was an abundance of VAPA teachers out there, but there isn't. I'm still waiting a waiver to come from the CDE, but after multiple communications with the CDE, I finally got a, sort of what we'll call you, don't call us anymore. They are working on it, but it has yet to be released. We're looking for a waiver from that 80%. We don't want to wipe out the requirement for staffing, but we could do so much more if we could allocate more than just 20% to arts and materials and VAPA quote-unquote stuff or resources. An example might be contributing towards the theater and other projects, but right now, we're kind of hamstrung by that 80% requirement. So I'll get back off my bird walk here now. So the, the LCFF or the LCAP budget, we're proposing for the remaining 20 positions that we do feel are valid and necessary to retain in support of our students. And so we have outlined it to mention the timelines of the March study session and the June approval dates. And so we bring that to you simply because at this time, we have a concern that we have potentially a March 15 timeline we need to be aware of if this plan does not look amenable to the board in general, in general terms. Again, if it's, if we really, really cut hairs and find out that LCAP really won't, we're short two FTE, we would look some, to some of these other funding resources to finalize it. Our goal is to maintain our staff. And so we just seek general direction, guidance from the board here. We're not asking this for a vote, because the vote will come actually through an LCAP vote, which occurs in June. But we are seeking some general guidance as if this looks doable or amenable, and I am more than happy to answer questions.
Okay, students, we have any student comments on this? Any comments from the public? Okay. Yes, no? Any board comments? Okay, Mr. Porter, you're up.
What happened to the owls?
The owl?
The owls.
They are still in classrooms, and most of them are not good right now.
What are we doing?
They're still, still, they're, they're still available. It was a, it was a distance learning expenditure, which again, three years ago, it seems like, a long time ago, and it also seems like yesterday, it was at that time deemed a necessary device.
I agree with you. I just noticed that if work falls, we have this resale thing going on, maybe we can resell those gloves, maybe a few bucks. Yeah, because I'm sure they're sitting in cabinets and, you know.
It's a high likelihood, or teachers may have said, can I get this out of my classroom, and it's sitting in a closet somewhere, so.
I was just curious, they were very expensive.
They were.
Well, thank you for your point, it was very thorough.
Sure. Of course.
Thank you. Could I repeat if I'm wrong, are you, are you saying we should move some of these funds from art, music, and instruction materials to the elementary?
No, I'm, I'm saying that if, on this page with the highlighted recommendations, which would move the positions into an LCAP, under an LCAP goal and therefore LCAP funding, if, if that is not amenable, there are a few other options we could look to, but the options are more challenging to move all of them, we could maybe move some of them. It's just really an option that there might be a place for one of these staff members, but, or the block grant. But our recommendation is to move, move them under LCAP goals.
Any other comments? All right, thank you then. Dr. Sully? Okay, next report is proposed Valley Robotics Academy, something going on there, Independence? Oh, yeah, a combination of that and Independence, 2425 reorganization. Who's up, Mr. Lambert? Paul?
Yes. Good evening, board president.
You need all these guys up here? I'm just checking, okay. We support our.
Good evening, board president, Knackstead, Superintendent Young, members of the board. Before you, you have the presentation with regards to the proposed reorganization of the Extension Road Complex, which includes Valley Robotics Academy and Independence School. These are unique programs that we have within our district that serve the needs of students between K and 12th grade. And here to talk about the programs and the reorganization, we have our principals, Mr. Eric Sandstrom and Dr. Stacy Conne. And they will introduce their teachers that are here with them this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert, President Knackstead, members of the board, Superintendent Young. I'm Eric Sandstrom, I'm the principal at Independence School and also oversee our Lodi Digital Academy. We've been working closely with Mr. Lambert on this. For Independence School, just a couple of quick things that we, we do and what we are. We serve about 188 students at Independence, grades K through 12. We also serve another additional 80 students or so through the Lodi Digital Academy in grades 3 through 12. We use the Lodi Unified District's curriculum for our core classes, we also use Cyber High. We also use our Apex program and other things for credit recovery and our elective courses. And currently, our Lodi Digital Academy students use the Pearson online curriculum. Just to touch on a couple of things within our classrooms, Mr. Brad Brayden, one of our longtime teachers at, at Independence, Mr. Brayden?
Our students also come from throughout Lodi Unified School District, attendance area, north Lodi, north Stockton, anywhere in between. For our credit recovery, we often have students come to IS with credit deficiencies. But depending on how those deficiencies, how many deficiencies there are, many students are able to catch up via block schedule and graduate on time. We use Cyber High and Apex to further support students' access to courses. Some students are able to work ahead and catch up very well and actually graduate early. This past December, we've had 13 early graduates.
Thank you, Ms. Brayden. And again, within our campus, for those folks who may, if you've come by recently, but within this, this past school year, we've recently had some significant renovations done to the entire school grounds, not just the Independence Campus, but the, everything at 13451 North Extension Road, the VRA area, the Independence area, the Henderson classroom buildings and stuff. The cafeteria multipurpose room has had significant renovations, the main office building's been renovated. We've also had some work done on our school grounds and the relocation of things like our storage containers, the conics boxes. The Independence Program provides an alternative setting for those students who may not find a, a large comprehensive school or campus to be the best for them. The flexibility in scheduling, the smaller overall class sizes, the focus on academics allows students to be successful in the program. We're very proud of our, our students meeting their goals, working with our excellent staff. The, we have a really diverse group of students, because we draw from throughout the district and through all walks of life, students meeting different challenges or other things that a comprehensive school just might not be fitting for them. So we're proud of working with them and our, our teachers and everyone else and meeting the students' needs. That's really what the program is about, and we've been very successful at it. I'll turn it over to Dr. Khan for comments on VRA.
Hi there, Stacy Conne, from Valley Robotics Academy. I was given the distinct pleasure to be able to open Valley Robotics in 2019, and to look at it then, to look at where it is now, with all the renovations, all the thing, and from 74 students to 280 students, from grade 7, 9, 712 to K-12, we've come a really, really long way. We could not have done this without teachers and all that support staff, they are what made it happen. It's not my end, it's everybody else doing the job. Very proud to say we have students that are graduating with their AA, AS from Delta, both. We had a student last year who graduated with both degrees when they left. We have kids that are going to Berkeley, Davis, Santa Cruz. I have a student who is just applied for Stanford and MIT. We had two students that were just accepted to UOP, so a lot of successes. Everything the students do at Delta College, their classes, they receive elective credits at the high school level with us. So the high school does not have electives, because all of that is done through Delta. I think restructuring is coming at a perfect time, because Mr. Khan and I are very lucky to be able to retire. So it's the perfect timing to be able to pull everything together and put those programs together and meld it. And then I had Ms. Amy Wilson, who is a first-grade teacher slash parent, and she can really speak to our elementary program, but also person who is now a sophomore in high school, and their experience.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Wilson, as Dr. Khan mentioned, I'm a first-grade teacher at Creekside, oh, sorry. I used to be at Creekside, sorry. At Valley Robotics Academy, also a parent of a sophomore at our school as well. My son started in seventh grade there as we were coming into the pandemic, and he has been there now since, for the last four years. As, so I can speak as both a parent and a teacher, I love being part of the staff and being able to see the ways that we flexibly, flexibly look at how to meet our students and families' needs from K-12, being again, the only school in our district that is K-12, and goes through the whole scope and span of, span of a student's life. As a parent, I'll say I've enjoyed watching my son, as well as the other students in the high school, middle school world, have the flexibility of taking the high school classes on campus, or core classes on campus, and then also be able to take classes with Delta, both on campus as well as online. And so giving them the opportunity throughout the school year, including summer, with them being able to take classes at the WOW Museum has been really a wonderful opportunity for students to be able to continue their learning throughout the full calendar year, as well as take some of those elective classes that they're trying to meet to be able to enter into UOP, the UC system, as well as the CSU system, again, guidance from the counselor and the administrative staff. So it's been, as a parent, I've, I've loved the flexibility and the ability for my son to be able to take opportunities, both educational and then looking at even professional development through the internships that he's, the internship he's been able to do, and extra curricular work. And then as a teacher, I love being part of the staff again, to see how we really think through and solve the ways to address the students' needs from K through 12 for 13 years. Thank you.
And as you can see, we're very proud of the work of our teachers, our staff, and our administrators at both Valley Robotics Academy and Independence School. This is a very important year for both campuses, because both campuses will be going through WASP accreditation this year. Two very distinct processes on the campus for each school, and it will be coming up in the spring on both campuses. And so we're, as we continue to celebrate the successes, we're looking at this restructuring as an opportunity to continue to meet the needs of our students throughout the district, because again, these unique programs serve students throughout the Lodi Unified School District. Thank you. If you have any questions, we're available to answer.
Any questions from the board? Okay.
I had a, just, I'm looking at cutting custodians by 0.5, 2.5, 2.5s, and wondering if we always never, we're always concerned about custodial in campus, and is that, do you see that being a problem?
Ms. Knackstead, members of the board, Ms. Alexander, I don't believe we're cutting custodians, we're actually increasing our custodial staffing as the recommendation.
Did I make, did I make the, I must have looked at it.
We, we currently have basically 1.4 custodians, and we could really use a full 2.0, a daytime and a nighttime custodial.
I see, a point two, I apologize. I apologize. I was looking at the counselor, but that's why I put my glasses on too late. Thanks.
I'll take out either custodial.
And I think you're actually hitting on something as part of this restructuring is as two schools have been built over time, you build in a little here, a little there, and what you realize is there's inconsistency in how staffing is set up and this consolidates that to, you know, make sure that there's a go-to person, a principal secretary, a head custodian, a night custodian. Instead of point four shows up here, one person leaves over there, it's really streamlined some of that.
And in the planning and talking of this, were there any issues that came up that you've had trouble resolving, or has everything kind of just meshed really nicely together? It sounds wonderful, but I'm wondering if there's, do you foreseeable things that might creep up a little bit, or are you feeling good about it?
Well, I will let the staff answer as well. I think that we're feeling very good about it. We thank our MNO team for coming over and helping to restructure the campus. I think that it is now, we hope that you will be able to come by and visit our campus at the Extension Road because it is, it is very much different than probably you have observed when you visited in prior years. They've done a fantastic job of beautifying the campus. I think it's a more welcoming environment, and we want all of our students to feel welcome and to feel engaged when they come to the campus and to feel proud of their campus, and I think that we have achieved that. We're trying to, as Mr. Young said, reduce the redundancy in some of our staffing and to make our staffing much more efficient in the way that we serve our students and our community.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay.
Thank you. That was a very helpful together report. A quick question about student achievement when combining these two campuses. VRA, we have children who are, we can say achievers, they have, you know, they're able to do more. But Independence, our children need more help there, or they're coming in to finish stuff, they haven't been able to finish it, if I understand it correctly. Are we putting pressure on either group of children by combining, combining them together?
I think that we're going to actually be able to serve the needs of the students much better, and we can have a unified program by even going to two platforms, or the two platforms that are used throughout the district, Apex and Cyber High, Pearson, which is a third platform that we use there on the campus, but is not used throughout the district as well. So, I think it makes things more efficient, and so that when students, because what we want students to be able to do is if they choose to stay at our Extension Road, any of our schools at Extension Road Complex, or if they return back to their home school, we want them to be prepared when they return back. We've had, as was mentioned, many successes as far as students graduating early, as far as students graduating with both a high school diploma and an AA degree. And so, I think that we are able to both meet the needs of enrichment and remediation for our students.
McFarlane.
Thank you, President, Connect Ed. I love the merging of the schools where my concern lies, and maybe it's just my worry. Each site has charm and wonderment, and they do their own thing. And so, I know lots of students at VRA, and I know many students at Independence, and when we merge them, I want to make sure that the charm of each program is alive. And so, each of you are an integral part of that. So, Dr. Conne, Julie, Principal Sandstrom, I wish you luck because you're merging, and I hope the charm as we merge them stays because as we see education in different models, these are both extremely important in our district. They're small, they're tiny, they're kind of tucked away, they might not be the main entree, but they are very important, and our students and the families that use them, they couldn't do it without them. And when you talk to the families that are, I know you two are very familiar with this, their student came alive when they hit these programs, and there's reasons why they're here. So, I don't want to lose that charm as we merge them. So, Ms. Sandstrom, I wish you all the best. I'll come see. VRA, if you haven't seen it before, Independence is always wonderful, but VRA from the inception has changed drastically. And if you haven't been there, you need to go during school so that you can see the children, the students, and the staff and everybody interacting. It's amazing. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments before we, student comments? Do you have any comments? Okay. Any public comments? Okay. Come on up.
President, Connect Ed, members of the board. So, first of all, I want to say I love any proposal that saves the district money, and the annual funding here is over $300,000 a year, which is great. I do worry though about, there are two really different programs, and I think that it is right that they get meshed, I really do. What I'm really, really worried about is the way the staff works at Independence versus How are we going to align that, you know, it's kind of like when Mrs. McFarlane said, how are we going to align those two programs so that the students who are enrolled in each of those get what they need? So, I'm all for it. I see, you know, that campus, it's kind of, to me, it's always been kind of hodgepodge because you have the two sides, but I also understand the two different sides, but I think that it could be managed better under one principle. I, you know, I like the whole idea of the counselors being able to serve both the student, you know, both student bodies, but just merging how, how the staff operates, that's my concern. Thanks.
Mr. Connect Ed, if I could just respond to that, I just want to be clear. VRA is still VRA. Independence is still Independence. Amy will still have her first graders showing up, and that, the integrity of that won't change. We have WASC that is a guiding, you know, document as to each school independently. I shouldn't use the term independently because that's the wrong term. Uniquely, but much like Lincoln Tech Academy has adult school and CTE under one principle, we will still have two separate sites, and they will still function as they have, working with the student population that they prioritize. So, I just want to make sure that that's clear, and Felisa, great question, the last thing we want to do is make a cookie cutter. We see both viable, and we see one principle able to lead that.
Cool. Thank you. Any other comments? North.
Good evening, members of the board. Mr. Young, Desert Y, CSC president. It just wouldn't seem right if I didn't come up and say anything about our classified staff and the restructuring of the programs out there. I don't think it's necessarily a negative thing, I do think it is a positive thing. There are a couple of little areas of my concern, but I'll, you know, be sure to work closely with our staff and personnel to make sure that those individuals will have a place to fall, primarily our attendance technician and our registrar positions. But other than that, nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, I think we're good.
So, we'll bring this back as an action item, and I'll come at the next board meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. First of all, is there, do we have any board vice or committee reports?
Yes.
I have one too, so go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to let you know that the facilities committee met this morning at 3:00 AM. We were talking about the plan for bond measure, which was also talked about today in our September 5th board meeting last year. It had come up, and we had given the staff directions to begin creating a timeline for it. And that was a very interesting conversation that we had this morning. So, the facilities committee have been assessing the district's facility needs and capability of facing a bond measure in November 27th, the ballot. We're hoping to do a survey, we're hoping to do a survey of, for likely voters, which should provide us more information on voter opinion. This survey needs to go out soon, soon as possible, but in 30 days, we should have answers. And Mr. Conne, if you have anything else to add to it, I appreciate it.
I think you've gotten all of it. So, there is a timeline that was published on the September 5th board meeting as a report. That timeline was produced by Mark Farrell and his staff, whom the board, the facilities committee met with this morning.
We're well done, right?
Any other? I do have one. This was in December, the Super Ten's Budget Review Committee, I guess we call it, met, and here it is, it'd be by 1:30. The bottom line is that the audit, the auditors had no findings and basically, and I believe we're going to get a full report coming up in the very near future. Right? Yeah. So, if anybody would like to get a jump on that, I have a full report here. I read every page. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other, many things? Okay. So, we're almost getting there. What's next? What comments?
No, no, no.
Okay. I'm sorry. Oh, board comment?
Sorry, it's actually, it's on your chair.
Oh, what did I miss? All right, well, I'm asking for any other board vice or committee reports, or are there? Oh, I see, there's, yeah, there is some. The City of Lodi Q by Q, 2004 Committee members have changed from Mrs. Alexander and Mr. Stroh to Mr. Porter and Mr. Stroh. So, we need to say that officially for a minute? Okay. Any other, any board comments? Any other board comments?
Sure.
Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Connect Ed. Tonight, I was really impressed with a couple of things. It hit me, the power of my 38 years of being a teacher, how I came out of a certain situation, and how I am very proud of being an educator. And then when Mrs. Conne spoke about the success of VRA, she said that she just kind of stood back and let her teachers and support staff do the work and get it done. I think that shows the need for us to really take a look at who we're putting in and what's going on in the classroom. When I hear that we have people without being able to pass the CSAT, and they're being moved from one class to one curriculum into another curriculum that they're not credentialed in, I struggle with that. When I hear the interns are being department heads, I struggle with that. When I hear that certain people are teaching English that are not credentialed at the high school level, Lodi High School, I struggle with that. I think we really need to get out and find the support staff that we need and the educators that we need. I brought up a coaching saying earlier today, if you don't have the people in the classroom or the athletes or whatever that get things done, then you're not going to be able to get things done. And I think we spend a lot of time looking at areas that are diversely important of the classroom. And we have people that are in positions that could easily fill an English teaching position at a high school and do a wonderful job, but yet they're sidetracked in another avenue. Again, I struggle with that. The importance is for our students to have rigor, and that rigor should come from innovative teachers that have such tremendous power on campuses, and a support staff that is willing to keep classrooms clean and to help those teachers, both through the parents and so forth, getting things done so our students can achieve. What I see sliding lately is not, and it all comes back to those simple things. We focus on the students and what they need to be successful, and that of good teachers and great support staff. And that's my comments for this evening.
Any other board comments? Yep.
I would just like to note and say what a wonderful, on Saturday, was the high school honors concert at Delta College for the county, and we had several of our students in for the choir, the orchestra, the honors orchestra, and honors band, and what an amazing, it's just so wonderful to see talented young people who are able to participate and do this. So, kudos to everybody who puts that on, you know, it's difficult and, you know, time consuming, and a lot of teachers put their hearts and souls into those kiddos. I want to thank the quick return today. I know teachers have been sitting in cold classrooms, and that's never fun because if teachers are in cold classrooms, so are our students. And it's never okay, in my book, to have somebody, you know, it's one thing when they put their hoodies over their head to be invisible for their cloak of invisibility kind of thing, but when they're doing it because they're actually cold. I want to thank EMMO, brought out to Lodi Mall today and took care of some things, and I hope that that continues, and I appreciate that as well that they, unfortunately, we've got some older buildings, and we're going to take care of them, right? That's my hope.
Any other comments? And I'll bring it up at the end then. First of all, I just want to say it's my honor to be asked to be president this year. To that end, I want to continue running efficient meetings. I thought Mr. Navan did a great job last year running the meetings. One way to do that is to continue using the executive summaries, which is something I started four, five years ago as board president. It's been my experience that board members have in fact reviewed the reports, so we really only need a summary. We don't need to go through every line item in a report, and then we can ask questions as needed, of course. But sometimes the reports can get longer than they have to be, and everybody goes to sleep. Not us, but everybody's up there. Second way I think to run an efficient meeting is of course, start on time, end on time. The meetings are, should probably end close to, or doing well, 9:30 I was going to say. Our bylaw 9323 states that the meeting shall be adjourned by 10 o'clock. We've been doing much better than that in the last year, and I'd like to continue doing it again with that practice. So, with that, Mr. Connect Ed, before you adjourn this meeting, I just have a question. Ms. Alexander, was it your actual birthday that you chose to go and participate in the, or was there another time nearby that you had a birthday?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're all clear that you very recently had a birthday, and so that you retired at age 25. This is just not sooner. Okay, sorry. Anyway, I wanted to wish you a happy birthday. I won't make you go through the embarrassment of it being sung.
And you can't sing to somebody when it's not their birthday.
It's, oh, no, there's a bylaw about that. You have a two week period. So, anyway, I just wanted to wish you a happy birthday.
And I found out Joseph from McNair, our student, is also on the 13th too.
Oh, there you go.
And Mr. Dawson?
I learned from Joseph that you and Joseph share birthdays.
Are you on an official Friday the 13th baby?
No.
See, I am, and that explains everything.
Sorry, Mr. Connect Ed, for interrupting your efficient meeting. Very appropriate. Okay. I need a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Yeah.
Send it.
All right. We're out of here.
Happy, happy birthday! I'm sure. Well, I don't agree with you.